Four initial questions from the Commission. Public testimony is not taken at this time. A reminder to presenters to clearly describe which slide you're presenting to assist those participating via audio. On the agenda today, we have one item for briefing. And that item for briefing is item A, DCP-ZDR-2020-03212 at 625 Liberty Avenue. That will be exterior renovations for an existing structure in the downtown neighborhood. And presenting that for us today is Ms. Kramer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is case, as Commissioner Burton-Falk said, this is case DCP-ZDR-2022-03212 at 625 Liberty Avenue. This is an application for exterior renovations at the lobby level of the existing 32-story mixed-use structure. There were no requests to the zoning board of adjustment for this case. The proposed interior renovations were reviewed by the design staff and the staff found them to be satisfactory. The development activities meeting was held virtually on March 10th of 2022 with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, and that is the registered community organization for this area. The summary of that report is attached to the Commission's briefing report. Under section 922.10.E2, the planning commission shall review this, this case as a project development plan. And so now we have Kevin Rutledge, who will present the proposal.
Thank you, Anne. Good afternoon, Commission. Happy to be presenting this project for EQT Plaza. And pretty much covered all the introduction I was going to do, so let's just go ahead and jump to the next slide. So we're looking at the site plan for the property. As Anne mentioned, it is an existing 32-story skyscraper with an exterior plaza on the east side, which we're seeing. We are focusing our discussion today on the main entry, on the Liberty Avenue facade outlined in red. But as Anne also mentioned, there is a companion project to perform interior lobby renovations. So what we're going to see today works in conjunction with design changes that we're making to the interior lobby spaces as well. Next slide, please. Looking at the streetscape on Liberty Avenue. As we can see, the existing building is primarily clad in granite of varying neutral hues and reflective glass. At the ground level, we have a polished granite base, black granite base, and we have some stainless steel column covers. One of the primary issues that we're attempting to address with these exterior renovations is we're trying to highlight the main building entrance. As you can see, the composition of the street-level facade is composed of three arched entry areas. And as you are approaching the building, either from the sidewalk or on the street, it's actually difficult to tell where the front door is. So we're hoping to remedy that with what you're going to see here in a minute. Next slide, please. So this is the central of the three arched base that we were looking at. This is the main entry to the building. The main lobby space is beyond. The building identification sign, the GQT Plaza, is proposed to remain. But we're really looking at the roughly square openings below the EQT Plaza sign for modification to create two new entry portals. So if we can look at the next slide, please. And that's what we're seeing here. So the goal of these entry portals, again, is to define the entry of the building and make it very apparent for both pedestrians and vehicle users where the front door is. But it's also to announce the interior renovations, the refresh of the building that we are undertaking, and provide a appropriate and wowing entrance to the building. Touching very briefly on materials, we'll get into this in a little bit more detail soon. But essentially, what we're looking at are custom laser-cut brass-finished metal panels as the main body of the surround with LED lighting coming through the linear slots. And if we can look at the next slide, please. The nighttime view would be something like this, where, again, it's attempting to highlight the entry, creating an illuminated portal and creating a jewel box-like effect to, again, play off of what we're doing inside the building. Next slide, please. So here's an enlarged plan. The sidewalk along Liberty Avenue is along the bottom edge of the page. There is a secondary arcade that is behind these entry portals. That's what we're seeing in front of the revolving doors. But the portals themselves are triangular and footprint. The idea is to create a bit of a forced perspective and to try to create a welcoming gesture into the building. As I mentioned, these are primarily metal panels finished in brass with a laser-cut pattern and backlit with LED lighting. But we also have new granite pavers that will span between the top of the existing stairs up from the sidewalk and the new, or excuse me, the existing revolving doors beyond. Next slide, please. So this is an elevation view of the same thing. The pattern is something we went through several iterations of until we landed on this linear motif. We feel that it plays nicely off of the existing horizontal lines in the granite cladding, but introduces that diagonal element to try to break it up a little bit, provide some contrast while still being sympathetic to the original design of the facade. Next slide, please. So just talking about some materials. On the left, this, we're looking at two images of a similar portal design. The intent here is really to communicate the goals with the lighting. During the daytime, we want the lighting to be fairly subtle and more of the brass finish and brass texture to read through. But at nighttime, we kind of want to invert that relationship and have the illumination come forward more. It's important to note, we don't want this to be too bright. So of course, all this lighting will be on dimmers and controllable by building operations to hit the right light levels. But the metal panels themselves will be most likely aluminum sheet. They will be laser-cut, as I mentioned, and finished in a metallic brass powder coat. This will give us a long-lasting and durable finish and avoids the patina issues that we would run into with a true brass sheet. It's not apparent in the renderings, but the white strips that have the illumination coming through, there will actually be a scrim of a woven brass mesh in front of the light transmitting sheets. The idea there is that we're bringing in a finer layer of texture and detail to those linear strips so that during the daytime, when the illumination levels are lower in the portal, you can have that finer level of detail and a little bit more richness. And then, of course, the lighting itself, the whole entry portal is constructed as a lightbox. The back walls of the lightbox will have LED sheets, and those will, excuse me, shine onto a frosted acrylic backup panel to help diffuse the light. So it should have a very even illumination, no hotspots, and no apparent light sources. And then the final two slides are really just, again, another head-on view of the two entry portals during the day. And the final slide is the same view in the evening. And with that, that concludes the presentation. I appreciate your consideration.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation at this time. Commissioners, any questions, comments that you would like to add? Okay, it's looking like there are no questions or comments. We thank you for bringing in a thorough presentation. We'll see you back in two weeks. Given you've completed this presentation, this is also going to end the briefing portion of today's agenda. So Commissioners, we'll be back at 2:00. Gives us a little bit of time to reconvene. All right, thank you so much. See you soon. Okay. We've got about two minutes left, but Commissioners, if you're here, just give me a sign, thank you. Cameras on or otherwise, let me know you're here. Appreciating you. We're down to a minute left. I'm also going to ask if the court reporter can identify themselves.
Hello, Ms. Burton-Falk. This is Dylan DeRana, the court reporter. Ready when you are.
Well, hello there, Dylan. Welcome back. Nice to be seen and good to see and hear you. Okay, we're almost ready here. I'll go ahead and begin to start so that I can at least do a roll call, because it's now 2:00 PM. And this is the hearing and action portion of the Planning Commission meeting for May 31st, 2022. Welcome again, everyone. Hearing means that these cases are presented for action by the Planning Commission. During the hearing portion of the Planning Commission meeting, we will take public testimony with instructions to be given after each item is heard. We want to welcome our applicant presenters. Just a reminder to them to clearly describe which slide you're presenting to assist those participating via audio. I'm going to do a roll call, just so that we're aware of what Commissioners are here. Commissioner Askey. Commissioner Blackwell. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Burton-Falk, present. Commissioner Dietrich.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dick.
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so I am going to read through today's agenda. On today's agenda, we have, first item up is approval of Commission minutes. today's agenda. On today's agenda, we have first item up is approval of commission minutes. Agenda item B will be correspondence. Agenda item C will be hearing in action. Agenda item D will be plan of lots and agenda item E will be the director's report. Prior to agenda item A, commissioners, I'm going to ask us to vote on Commissioner Dietrich as acting secretary for today. Can I get a motion from the floor to do so?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Askey and Commissioner Dick. It looked like you had your hand up.
No, I'm just gonna move. That's fine. Don't worry.
Okay, great. A second. So I'm all in. Now, we're going to do Commissioner Askey.
I.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
I.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Hi.
Commissioner Dick.
I.
And Commissioner O'Neill.
I.
Thank you very much, commissioners. Now we'll move to agenda item A, which is approval of commission minutes. That would be for May 17, 2022. Given any edits have been made, if there are any others, if not, can we call for a motion from the floor to approve May 17, 2022?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Askey. Thank you very much. So Commissioner Askey.
I.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
I.
Commissioner Dietrich.
I.
Commissioner Dick.
I.
Commissioner O'Neill.
abstain.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Meeting minutes from 5:17, 2022 are approved. Agenda item B, which is correspondence for May 31, 2022. There are two items of correspondence, one for open plan rezoning. That would be from a Navis Rainey, Executive Director, Oakland Transportation Management Association. Next item of correspondence is for the Pittsburgh skate park proposal. I will note that there is no zoning development review application that's been received. And that is from Molly Figgus. Okay, having gone through correspondence, the next item up, our agenda item C under hearing in action. Under hearing in action, we have two items there. Agenda, I'll read through both and then we'll go back to begin. Agenda item number one is DCP-CDR-2022-00446 at 642 Fort Duquesne Boulevard. That is a renovation of existing nine-story structure. Agenda item two under hearing in action is DCP-ZDR-2021-00263 at 305 Wood Street. Moving back to item number one, DCP-ZDR-2022-00446 642 Fort Duquesne Boulevard. Again, renovation of existing nine-story structure for multi-unit residential central business district neighborhood. And presenting that is Ms. Kramer.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Anne Kramer. I'm a member of the Department of City Planning. As Commissioner Burton Falk said, this is case DCP-ZDR-2022-00446 at 624 Fort Duquesne Boulevard. And this is for an application that includes interior and exterior renovations as well as new use as multi-unit residential with associated amenity spaces. There were no requests to zoning board of adjustment for this case. The proposed exterior renovations were reviewed by design staff and found to be satisfactory. The Department of Mobility and Infrastructure approved the transportation impact study and is reviewing the site plan for consistency with that. The development activities meeting was held on January 13th of 2022 with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. And that is the registered community organization for this area. The summary report of that meeting was also attached to the planning commission staff report for this, for this case. Under section 922.10.e2, the planning commission shall review this case as a project development plan. And so the staff recommends approval with our standard condition that the final construction plans, including the site plans, elevations and landscape plans shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing the final record of zoning approval. That's the ROSA. And with that, we'll have Kevin Rutledge, who will present the proposal.
Thank you, Anne. Good afternoon again, commissioners. As Anne mentioned, we're looking at 642 Fort Duquesne Boulevard. A brief introduction to the property is constructed a little over 100 years ago for Pittsburgh Play Glass as a glass warehouse facility. It is a nine-story building with a full basement. The building has been abandoned for a couple of decades now. And we are proposing to turn this into a multifamily residential project, as Anne mentioned, with associated amenity spaces. The structure is part of the federally recognized Penn Liberty Historic District. And as such, will be pursuing federal tax credits through the National Park Service. However, the individual structure nor the district are locally listed. So we have not had to go through the historic commission for approval. It is part of the GTC zoning district. Overall, existing building height is 137 feet from the sidewalk up to that penthouse structure in the upper right-hand corner. We have approximately 16,000 square feet per floor, and that is 100% lot coverage. The basement proposed use is predominantly amenity space and residence storage. The ground floor will have residential lobby and select number of apartments. And floors two through nine are entirely filled with apartments. The total unit count is 142. Of that 142, three will be type A accessible units in compliance with the 2018 IBC accessibility requirements. And our lot area per unit is currently sitting at 116 square feet per unit. And that is exceeding the minimum of 110 square feet per unit. Next slide, please. So location is along Fort Duquesne Boulevard, facing the Allegheny River. And we have some pretty nice views of the North Shore. Next slide, please. And you can see that the building is tucked right between the Encore on Seventh on the east side, the Biem Theater on the west side. And again, this building is rather prominent from the Pirate Stadium on the North Shore. Next slide, please. Okay, looking at the site plan, all plans moving forward north will be to the right. So the river is to the right, just to orient you. The existing sidewalk and, and street frontage will be improved. We are coordinating some new underground vaults for transformers with Duquesne Light. That's in the upper right-hand corner of the site. But we will be introducing street trees where possible. Right now, we're planning on three street trees. There are currently none on site. And any remaining areas of sidewalk will be clad with new brick pavers. The transportation study that was submitted and approved by DOMI included two on-street loading zones. The first is in front of the building. You can see it between two of the street trees. That takes advantage of an existing loading zone on site that is out of the path of travel for the traffic lanes. The second loading zone will be on Barker's Place on the upper hand side of the page between our building and the Biem Theater. This is a public way. It is important to note that Scott Place on the lower portion of the page is a vacated right-of-way. It was vacated in the late 1980s. Scott Place is predominantly used for vehicular egress from the parking garage that is to the south of our site. Next slide, please. Just some shots of the existing building, the Fort Duquesne side. Make note, if you would please, of the garage doors and the, the general street frontage. We're making a number of interventions to improve that, that street level sense of arrival and that, that presence of the building. But on the upper floors, we're primarily looking at masonry restoration to bring the building back up to an acceptable level of appearance. And also address some masonry failures that we're seeing in the building. So one of those photos, you can see some large staples running up the corner of the building. So stabilization and restoration are part of the masonry package. The windows will be entirely replaced on all three elevations that face the streets. These will be done in a historically appropriate manner to match the existing sightlines of the Mullions and Muttons to the greatest degree possible. It's important to note that the fourth elevation of the building, the south elevation, is almost entirely covered by the parking garage. So there really is no work on the south side of the building. Next slide, please. These are two images of the alleys. Scott Place is the larger image on the left. Again, we have existing windows that will be replaced with historically appropriate windows. On the right-hand side are two shots of Barker's Place. This is a fairly active alley used for loading of the Biem Theater by the Cultural Trust. And also for trash access to several of the restaurants that are further down the block. So we are coordinating those logistics with the Cultural Trust and have been in contact with them throughout the life of the project so far. But our ground floor level interventions at Barker's Place do include opening up existing brickton openings to bring back windows that had historically been located there. And just a point of note, since these photos have been taken, the fire escape that you can see on the side of the building has been removed. So the building, as it currently stands, does not include the fire escape, nor is a new fire escape proposed for the building. Next slide, please. Looking at the Fort Duquesne, the north elevation as it is proposed to look after renovation. As I mentioned again, primarily looking at masonry restoration and window replacement. We are introducing a couple of new windows where windows currently don't exist. Those are happening at the second floor level. And you can see at the ground floor, we are taking out the garage doors and putting in new glass storefront entryways. So the main entry is taking advantage of the largest of the four bays. We have smaller glass storefronts in the adjacent three bays. And on the far right-hand side, where we currently have an ethos-clad entrance, we're going to take that off the building and restore the masonry that was historically at the lower right-hand corner of the facade. Next slide, please. Looking at the west elevation along Barker's Place, again, masonry restoration, window replacement. We can see the profile of the theater square garage behind on the right-hand side. Also of note on this facade, we do have a new coiling door at a small interior loading dock. This loading dock will not be large enough for trucks to pull into. The size of the alley and the available spacing between column bays in the building, don't permit that. However, the on-street loading space identified on the site plan will be directly adjacent to this loading dock door. And this will be used for resident move-in and move-out and also for trash management along the alley. Next slide, please. And then looking at the Scott Place elevation. Nothing much to note here except for in the upper right-hand corner, you see the profile of the existing signage structure. We also saw that in prior photos and the north elevation, that signage structure is existing to remain. We are not proposing any new high-wall signage or any covering of that signage structure. The plan is to simply clean it up and paint it and illuminate it from the roof level at a later date. But that is not included in this, this phase of the project. Next slide, please. Looking at the ground-level floor plan, again, we have the residential lobby directly off of the main entry. We have some residential support spaces, including a leasing center, a package room and a separate mailroom. You can see a new circulation core in the middle of the building. We are taking out all of the existing stairs and elevators in the building because they are inopportune located. And we are introducing new elevator shaft in the middle and two new exit stair towers, all of which will be fully code compliant. The rest of the floor plate is populated with apartments that will have windows opening onto the adjacent alleyways. Next slide, please. And then this is an example of an upper floor plan. This floor has 16 units on it. Several of the higher floors have, excuse me, 16 units. This one has 18, or the higher floors have 18 units, pardon me. But this gives you an example of the mix of one and two-bedroom units that we're attempting to achieve with the layout. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the building will be fully accessible. There will be a fully accessible main entrance and the elevator provides an accessible route to all areas within the building. The public toilet, excuse me, the basement and mini-space will have a fully accessible public toilet room, which is new to serve it. And of course, the accessible apartment units, type A units will be provided per the governing code requirements. From a sustainability side, the main feature of the building is the existing building reuse and capturing all of the embodied energy in the structure as it currently stands. But we're taking that, that shell and we're improving the envelope substantially. So that includes new wall insulation to bolster the thermal performance of the current multi-wife masonry walls. All of the new windows will be high-performance windows, meeting current energy code requirements. And a new roof with code-compliant roof insulation will also be provided. On an MEP side, we're looking at efficient systems for the apartment units. Looking at a variable refrigerant flow VRF system for the apartments, which we typically find yields some, some pretty nice energy savings for the residents and for the overall building energy consumption. Of course, we'll have LED lighting throughout and looking at efficient ways of using water to reduce usage for the apartment units. And that will primarily be achieved through low-flow fixtures, excuse me. And then there is no requirement for stormwater management on this site due to the scope of the project. But it is worth noting that we will have the street trees along Fort Duquesne Boulevard and separation of storm and sanitary lines as they exit the building to improve the performance of the existing combined line that leaves the building. Next slide, please. Just want to touch briefly on some construction management aspects. So of course, all work will be done in accordance with the city of Pittsburgh zoning requirements. I should actually probably better look at the next slide for some diagrams. If we could. Great. So it's anticipated that there will be very few lane closures along Fort Duquesne Boulevard really related to steel erection possible for later portion of the, of the project. But of course, we're looking at sidewalk closures along Fort Duquesne Boulevard and the closure of the existing parking lane adjacent to the sidewalk. We anticipate having a materials hoist to serve all floors of the building, which will reduce the need for cranes and additional lane closures. And of course, we'll be coordinating the pedestrian access along the block with DOMI and the city to make sure that pedestrian access is maintained safely around the project site. We're looking at a construction timeline of 16 to 18 months, starting probably this fall. Next slide, please. And then just looking at a few quick rendered views of the building post-renovation. I think we've touched on everything so far. The replacement windows, the exterior restoration of the masonry. You can see that existing signage structure that I discussed earlier. And of course, the ground-level storefront windows. Next slide, please. You can see that better in the street view. The street trees are not shown in this view for clarity's sake, but of course, there will be three street trees along the curb line. And you can see the main entrance in the higher bay creates a rather grand entry for the building. And then the final slide, please. Just an overall shot of the building, looking at the Fort Duquesne elevation and the Barker's Place elevation, seeing everything in context. I think we've Seeing everything in context, I think we've touched on everything that is highlighted on this slide. So with that, I appreciate your consideration and happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you for the presentation. At this time, we do take public testimony. So if there is someone who would like to speak, please raise your hand regarding this item. If you're on the phone only, press star nine. I'd like you to state and spell your first and last name and identify where you live and the organization that you're representing. Do we have anyone raising their hand on this item?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So no hands raised at this time, commissioners. Do you have any questions or comments? Hearing saying none. Do I have a recommended motion is to approve based on the two conditions that are present in our report? Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. A second. Commissioner Dick, thank you very much. All right, I'll do a call. Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. So the motion carries and it has passed. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move on to the next agenda item. The next agenda item, give me just a moment here, I have too many tabs though. The next agenda item is item DCP dash ZDR dash twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two six three. That will be for three oh five Wood Street. That is new construction of a 20-story multi-unit. And forgive me because I've not found my agenda here. Whomever is presenting, please present.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can we connect with the Department of City Planning? As we allow our presenters into the, as panelists, I will start the report. This is application DCP dash ZDR dash twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two six three. A project development plan for renovation and exterior alterations of an existing four-story structure and new construction of a 20-story tower utilizing that existing base structure as a podium for mixed-use development. Recreation and Entertainment Indoor Limited Restaurant General and multi-unit residential uses are proposed for the four-story base structure and multi-unit residential is proposed for the tower structure. The address is in the GTA Golden Triangle Sub District Bay Zoning District. Residential dwelling units are limited to one unit per 110 square feet of lot area by right. 142 dwelling units are permitted. 300 units are proposed. This application appeared before the zoning board of adjustment as case eighty-three of twenty twenty-one on April eighth, twenty twenty-one. Requesting a various zoning code section nine ten dot oh one dot F dot three for one dwelling unit per 110, 110 square feet is permitted. And one dwelling unit per 52 square feet is requested. The applicant's request was approved, allowing for the 300 max residential dwelling units. Prior to the ZBA hearing, a virtual development activities meeting with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership was held on February 11th, 2021. A copy of the DAM report is attached to your hearing and actual report. This project proposes to utilize floor area bonus pursuant to section nine fifteen dot oh four dot E. Sustainable development bonuses for lead certified buildings. The maximum bonus allows for a 20% additional floor area ratio. The permitted FAR in the GTA is 13. With the bonus, the permitted FAR would be 15.6. The request is for 15.5. Staff design review occurred on January 10th, 2022 and recommended review by the contextual design in an advisory panel. The design review summary is attached to your report. A transportation study has been submitted and is under review by Domi. The applicant's statement of compliance per the review criteria is also attached. It is staff's recommendation that the planning commission approves project development plan DCP ZDR twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two six three with the following conditions. The Domi shall approve the, excuse me, the Domi shall approve the transportation study and issue the necessary Domi approvals, including curb cut permits and site plan review prior to issuing the record of zoning approval. And that final construction document shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing the final record of zoning approval. And with that, I will turn it over to our applicants.
Good afternoon. Ryan and Davina in the Association of Architects, joined by Steve Kim from CCA, City Club Apartments. Thank you very much for doing the project this afternoon. So this is a project, very exciting project redevelopment of the existing YWCA downtown on Wood Street. And we're working in conjunction with PKB Group to redevelop the project for CCA. Next slide, please. So location is obviously Central Business District downtown. Next slide, please. This is aerial view of the existing site condition. Orient everybody. So Wood Street is primarily building frontage. It is located between Third and Fourth Avenues. They say the frontage of the building situated on wood with the two sides on the two avenues. Then the rear of the of the building is up against the existing parking authority parking garage situated between this property and PBG Plaza. I guess building five maybe. So just highlighting the location of the building. It's a very unique setting. It is surrounded primarily on the on the Third and Wood Street sides by a number of very attractive Boarts turn of the century high-rise buildings, which as we'll go through the presentations, serves as a sort of baseline for the design of the project and sort of utilizing their architectural, their architectural distinction to interject our new sort of modern tower within that context. Next slide, please. So as was mentioned, the project is an extension of the existing structure that is sitting there today. So at the the outset of the design of the project, we look at the context, the context of the surrounding area, which are primarily from 16 to 21-story buildings. So contextually, the building is very appropriate in terms of its overall height. It was originally constructed with the idea that a tower could be added to it. So structurally, it is capable of supporting that. But it was originally also looked at in the way we're pursuing it in that the existing structure to remain would would act as essentially a plinth with a skinnier, more elongated tower that would be situated on top of that. So rather than extruding the entirety of the base, we're creating a smaller, more narrow volume that set back off Wood Street and aligned with the rear of the property along the the adjacent property line for the parking garage to allow for that sort of more, let's say, mid-century aesthetic in terms of the tower over plinth design. Next slide, please. Couple, a couple contextual images here. So on the larger image on the left-hand side here is of the existing structure at the corner of Wood and Third. So that's looking at the existing ground level, which is primarily storefront, which is inset slightly from the existing structure. The exposed concrete columns, as you can see, sort of primer of the structure with the remaining raining floors, interior floors being entirely opaque and clad in a light tan buff masonry veneer within an articulated horizontal concrete exposed band between that veneer and the storefront below. You can see in the distance some three of those larger buildings that I alluded to, which sort of set the stage for the proposed design. In the upper right corner, we view looking down fourth, the Parking Authority Garage is on the right-hand side. And what is, I guess, now known as Carlisle, a condominium building in the background. And the lower right corner is a view along Wood Street with a bank tower on the left and the arid building on the right with the building in the background. Again, the same articulation of of architecture as the the opposite side of the building with the solid masonry for the upper floors and on the inset storefront on the lower floors. Next slide, please. Just a couple more contextual images. So the left-hand side here is just looking down Wood Street towards PNC with the two Boarts Towers in the background. Middle slide is looking back towards PBG Place. And then the final slide on the right-hand side is looking back up towards the building. You see it very small in the in the background there with PBG in the foreground. Next slide, please. As was mentioned, the project located in GTA zoning district, which multi-unit residential, recreation, entertainment, indoor limited restaurant general are all permitted uses. The project is pursuing a lead bonus, which permits a 20% increase in FAR. The proposed project is 15.5 to one relative to the maximum. That would be 15.6 to one. Bike parking, as a result of the number of units, we have 103 required and are provided. Stormwater is not required. The project is not disturbing 110,000 square feet. There's 100% parking parking reduction permitted in the GTA. And urban open area is not required as we're not, as we're not in excess of 20,000 square feet of lot area. Next slide, please. Sorry, reorient everybody. This is the existing survey. So Wood Street on the bottom, Third on the left, Fourth on the right. Building frontage that we saw in the context images is along Wood Street. At present, there is a bump out curb condition that is at the intersection of Wood and Third. That then leads to a loading zone that would all remain. Currently, the building is situated with a separation between it and the parking garage structure or park garage parcel directly to the top of the page. That currently serves as sort of a loading area, and that will be the proposed loading area servicing the building, which we'll see in the floor plan. And then as we go to the next slide, we'll see on Fourth and Wood that we're proposing a slight alteration. So so with the proposed layout, this sort of simplifies the plan here, but again, same orientation. We're taking the idea of the Third and Wood Street bump outs, which constricts traffic flow on that intersection and doing the same thing on Fourth. That's in current conversation with Domi and the Port Authority. It has a bus stop there with the same intent, basically of what was done on Third to benefits for traffic flow, parking arrangement, et cetera. As it, as it, traffic crosses from Fourth to Wood and then vice versa from Third across Wood towards PBG. In terms of the overall ground floor layout, as you saw in the previous images of the existing condition, that there is an inset storefront condition, however, it's not very well articulated and not very inviting. So what we're supposed to do is sort of inset those pieces further primarily on the two corners of the building to really create a nice, larger, more conspicuous plaza condition for our three main uses at the ground level. So on the right-hand side, we have the restaurant entry. Currently, there's a restaurant there. Now that restaurant footprint will be expanded to be a two-story restaurant from a single-story condition now. That entrance will be set back off that corner to allow for outdoor, outdoor seating within the confines of the parcel. But also kind of create a little bit more breathing room and experience for pedestrians as they go down Wood Street and on Fourth. At the center of the building is the existing entrance to the YWCA that will remain and now become a health club entrance point, which will utilize the existing building's benefits, i.e. all the health club conditions that currently exist. And on the left-hand side at the intersection of Third and Wood, we'll have the new residential entrance that replaces the existing storefront, retail storefront space. And that will again be inset significantly more than currently current conditions with a double-height space as well to really articulate those two corners. At the parking garage side of the building, we'll have our entrance point to the secure bike storage as well as loading access that will be provided both from Third and Fourth. That provides direct access to the building's primary elevators through a rear rear door, as well as access to the back of house for the restaurant. Next slide, please. So just working basically up, up from here, this is the lowest level floor plan. Want to go next slide, please? As mentioned, the existing health club spaces will remain. Those recur on the lower levels of the building. So currently, there's a basketball court and a pool. Those will remain. Those will be publicly accessible. Health club. It's not specific to the building. So it'll still be basically a community-wide amenity rather than specifically to the building. Next slide, please. Ground level, just highlighting the primary uses in a little bit more clearer way. So the restaurant space on the right-hand side, I mentioned in green, club lobby down the middle and yellow. And then the residential lobby and accessory spaces in pink and purple. We'll have onsite leasing, large mailroom package, et cetera, back of house area, including the fire command center, bike storage, restrooms. And then finally, the primary utility components at the rear of the building adjacent to the new elevators that will be threading through the tower as well as through the existing structure. Next slide, please. Within the footprint of the second floor of the existing building, we'll start interjecting residential use in combination with the double-height space and amenity space for the residential use of the building. So you see the restaurant again of the double-height space on the right side in green. And then some multipurpose components, wellness, conference rooms, et cetera, on the second floor servicing the residential use with the remainder of the site or remainder of the floor being apartments. Next slide, please. As we go up through the typical remaining floors of the buildings, so level three and four, we're interacting 100% units. As we'll see in the elevations of the building, we are interjecting large inset balcony conditions and opening up the existing masonry veneer to allow for residential use. Again, it's completely opaque. So we're interjecting those components to make it much more architecturally interesting, but also functional for the proposed use. Next slide, please. As we shift to level five, this becomes the rooftop and plinth and the offset condition of the of the existing to the to the proposed tower. There'll be a large outdoor amenity, green roof assembly at this transition, which those units that will be fronting on the area will have access to. But again, that will be utilized for stormwater management, but also essentially a beautification of that condition right now to allow for a nice, attractive amenity for both the units looking out onto it, but also all the neighboring buildings looking out onto the roof. Next slide, please. So as we go up through the remainder of the tower, level six through 21, it's consistent layouts for all the units. Total number of units is 300. Of those 294 will be type B adaptable units and six will be type A fully accessible units. Additionally, the project is including 30 units of affordable housing. So 20 studios for six one bedrooms and four two bedrooms, all of which will be proposed under a 50% AMI basis. Next slide, please. As we get to the top of the tower, obviously fantastic view from this building and really from all the buildings in this particular zone of downtown. So a residential amenity space classified as the Sky Club as part of the CCA branding will be located on the top of the building. That'll include both indoor and outdoor amenities. Space involves a rooftop pool as as well as, you know, significant green, green roof assembly components and some mature landscaping to really create a unique and exciting top floor of the building. Next slide, please. So section through the kind of the entirety of the structure. So as I mentioned before, there's three below grade levels of which those would be the fitness space or the health club space from ground level up through level five are the existing building reconfigured floors. And then the tower extends from there within the inset amenity space on the top floor on level 24. Next slide, please. So as was mentioned at the outset, the tower is inset rather significantly from the footprint of the base below. You can see that here in this case, you know, almost about a quarter of the of the width of the the lower portion is is inset here. But then the residential units extending from there. Next slide, please. So as we shift into the architectural design of the building, again, we really looked at the neighboring properties as the sort of baseline for understanding both the way this building can be articulated, but also kind of co-mingling the CCA brand standards, which are very unique to the to the brand. They consist of a wide range of unit type, unit amenity components is within those types. And by that, I mean, there's conditions where there's conditions where we have balconies for specific units, larger windows, smaller windows, projecting bay windows, inset balconies, projecting balconies, those sorts of things. Which allow for a more dynamic and unique facade condition that is overlaid on a more consistent compete consistent architectural expression here, which is essentially a range of basically two to three window types. That are punched into an aluminum frame exterior cladding, which we'll see a little bit further here. And that allows us to create this sort of overlay of the projecting and inset balconies as well as the the bay conditions that occur within the sort of main body of the tower. At the lower levels of the building, as I mentioned, we're projecting large openings within the existing masonry veneer. Pulling that veneer off the the second floor and allowing it to occur on levels three and four. To really accentuate the the corners of the building where the restaurant and the retail or residential entrance points are. And then creating some large cuts for the large cuts for the invented invented balconies for those units. And then we're also creating a contrasting color for the top floor, the top three floors of the building. Again, taking some some cues from neighboring properties, neighboring buildings, in which they have really a strong articulated base. A consistent middle portion of the building and then a an articulated cap to the to the structure. And that goes sort of one thing further with our with the dynamic expression of the rooftop amenity space with our sort of dinal. Rooftop condition that opens itself up towards the pool portion of the building. Next slide please. So this building is visible from all sides, so there's no real back to it. The only differentiation on this portion of the building, which would be the parking lot side of the building, is our elevator lobby extends up through the middle of the structure. That's articulated here with contrasting color and material. As we'll see in a minute here. That coloration and materiality ties into the top three floors and allows that to kind of run down through and then intermingle with the with the uptick of the rooftop amenity roof structure. To really create a consistent architectural dialogue across the building. Next slide please. We took that vertical cut in the building from the elevator elevator lobby or elevator tower portion of the building and interjected that onto the side of the building. As well, so this is the the southwest side of the building. So you see the window articulation is the same, however, on this side as well as the opposite short side, there's no projecting balconies. As the units on the ends of the buildings actually are able to utilize those conditions on the long side of the building. Next slide please. Essentially the same elevation, articulation is very similar. Just a little bit more distinction on the lower level, primarily with that much more further cut in on the existing structure or existing masonry veneer for the restaurant portion of the building. Next slide please. So zooming into the materiality of the building, we really wanted to create a dynamic and deep facade expression rather than being very flat. So we're using a combination of projecting ninety degree and then forty five degree aluminum panels. To create a sort of framework around all the windows. So every single window at its sill will have a sloped slope sill condition. And then in some cases, it will have a ninety degree jam condition or a forty five degree jam condition depending on how that how that patterning fits with the overall expression of the building. The project will be utilizing a VTEC HVAC system, which is highlighted with the contrasting color, expanded metal screen. Those will be the full height within the framework of the window assembly and will be colored in a sort of, let's say, carbon or or terracotta color. To mingle with the with the, let's say, off white panel color of the primary color of the building. As well as the dark colored mullions of the windows. Next slide please. So as we zoom into the ground level, sorry, the existing building, there's sort of multitude of materiality. So at ground level, where there's currently storefront. We're interjecting areas of opacity in which we're doing a glazed vertical terracotta panel. Unifying that condition across the ground with a ground based masonry. And then as we project up into the upper floors of the building, taking the same expanded metal scrim, scrim material and using that as our balcony railing piece, that'll also be the same sort of rust or terracotta color. And then providing a heavy gauge aluminum frame around the openings, since we'll be saw cutting into the masonry veneer. To create these openings in the existing structure. We really want to frame and clean up that condition. Now create, that'll be done via the projecting aluminum frame, which you see in sort of the second image. Below the expanded expanded metal lap. Next slide please. So three dimensional view of the building, we look at the flat views here, so you get a little bit more sense of the expression and the depth that's created by projecting and inset balconies. So again, utilize that range across the building to create a nice sort of framework of projecting and inset balconies on the on the perimeters of the overall width of the building and utilizing the projecting balconies and terrace doors. In the middle of the building, you create a little bit of shadow play. And then that becomes a little bit more consistent as you go to the upper three floors. With the intention of that changing slightly to allow for more consistency on those floors. As we get to the top of the building, we have the projecting elevator component with our fluted terracotta panel that dives into a custom laser cut metal panel system. That that surrounds the elevator overrun as well as mechanical components that would be located on top of the building. Since the entire top floors is habitable, we'll have a glass railing that goes around around that parapet condition. Within projecting horizontal roof roof structures and trellis structures to provide shade and a variety of experiences for residents on the top. Next slide please. So if we zoom out here, sort of in its own context, the building is certainly colorful and dynamic and we wanted to show the the building in its overall context. And as you can see, there's quite a bit of articulation on all the neighboring buildings. You see the PNC tower in the in the background. With its alternating panel, Kernwall facade. You see the more, let's say, state boarts structures in the foreground, however, those are also very articulated. You can see the building sort of directly to the left of our of our proposed structure. Has that same sort of coloration at the at the tower portion, which then transitions to a lighter color at its top and kind of took that same idea and flipped it on its head by having the dark color on the top and the lighter color in the middle. Next slide please. I know you guys are a little bit strapped for time here, so I'll go quick. The this is a view on Wood Street, looking at the building. And it's sort of general context with the buildings relative to its surroundings. Next slide please. An evening view, obviously very excited to see this building, both articulated at the ground floor and its existing structure, but also with the tower. Primarily with the alternating patterning of the windows to create a nice dynamic facade. Next slide please. Zoom in version of the residential entrance point. So as I mentioned, double height space here, really creating a nice inviting space for for the pedestrian experience. Next slide please. The opposite side of the restaurant space, so really trying to create a very exciting and and a unique exterior and indoor, outdoor indoor space for restaurant user on this ground level. You know, we have our our inset balconies and such on the upper levels of the of the plinth here. Next slide please. This is the middle of the building, so the health club entrance, similar to where it is now. But will be reskinned and re-clad with the vertical terracotta panels. To again, create a nice texture and experience for for pedestrians. Next slide please. A view looking at the the building from the west. So again, very visible as it says situated above the parking garage. Next slide please. Same view in the evening, again, looking at interjecting some vertical lighting and horizontal lighting at both the elevator tower and the top of the building, really create a beacon and an exciting location. Next slide please. Couple of sustainable components of the project, as was mentioned, we're pursuing the lead bonus, so that would be at base minimum, the lead cert- lead certification. Also pursuing fitwell wellness certification for the project, wired score, which is a technology certification. Pursuing a an EUI energy usage intensity reduction on the overall building's performance, about fourteen percent. Building would be metered individually and we're pursuing discussions with GBA as we move on to the next steps of the design. To identify any other opportunities for increasing sustainability of the project. Obviously, the baseline of the project being the reuse of the existing structure is significant as it as it retains that the embodied mass and the embodied energy of that structure. So utilizing essentially what was planned to be always expanded and going down that road. There'll be stormwater management onsite via the green roof assemblies. All those green roofs will utilize native plantings throughout. Envelope, as I mentioned, will be a high performance exterior wall assembly combined with high performance glazing. And then with the the interior elements will certainly be in accordance with all of our sustainable programs. With high, you know, recycled content, low load and no VOC, those sorts of things. Next slide please. Quickly touch on the construction management plan. So the building will utilize the sidewalk as well as the loading areas that currently exist. There'll be lay down and gate access points on Third Avenue. We utilize one lane of Wood Street, will allow continual bus traffic on Wood Street. As part of the access on that side of things. And then we will utilize the sidewalk only on Fourth Avenue. And not the parking lot area. Building will be constructed with a tower crane so that the sort of the main bulk of the construction activity will occur within the confines of the existing building. There'll be hoists located on both sides of the structure on Third and Fourth, provide material access and then contractor lay down and storage will occur in the space between the parking garage and the existing buildings. Within dumpster access on Third. Next slide please. And I'll just quickly go, we just had a couple of support letters, one from PDP. Next from Point Park and then finally one from Masterdwellers Association. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you for that presentation. Prior to calling for public testimony. Mr. Koenig, my apologies for not acknowledging you as presenter appropriately. My window management skills were not moving so swiftly. With that, do we have any public testimony? Anyone raising their hands?
There are no hands raised at this time and welcome to Commissioner Mingo.
Commissioner Mingo, thank you very much for being present. Okay, since there are, there is no public testimony. Commission, at this time, do you have any questions, comments? Or is there a motion from the floor to approve based on the conditions in our report? Okay, Commissioner Dietrich, motion second?
No, 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 I have a comment.
What's sorry?
Yeah, before I want, I want to thank the team for bringing in the letters. We had requested those during the briefing and I appreciate you adding them to the packet. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions, comments or a motion from the floor?
So moved, Commissioner Mingo.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingo. Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner O'Neil.
Commissioner O'Neil, so then I'll go in line. Commissioner Askey. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dietrich? Commissioner Dick? Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
And Commissioner O'Neil? So the motion carries and it's been approved. Thank you very much and have a great afternoon.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So now we're going to move to agenda item D under Plan of Lots. Mr. Shepkey, were we planning on taking all of those or did you need to separate them and if if you do need to separate them, I do need to tell you that I'll have to recuse from one, so that would be number eight.
The first See here, the first item number one. Two and items number one and two have to be taken together as a batch and then the following eight could be taken together as well.
Okay, fantastic. All right, so I can read through items one and two and then we can take those and then separately eight, take that and then we'll do three through seven, nine and ten. Fair?
Sounds good.
Okay, very good. Under Plan of Lots, items one and two will be taken together. Item one, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty two dash zero zero seven seven four at Rosetta Street, major subdivision Garfield. Item two, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty two dash zero zero seven one three Forbes Avenue, major consolidation, North Oakland.
Thank you. The first item is the Rosetta Street subdivision. This is the proposed subdivision of two parcels into eleven parcels. Lots one through ten would have twenty feet of frontage on Rosetta Street and would be two thousand square feet in area. The application also create a right of way lot, which would have twenty feet of frontage on Rosetta Street would be two thousand square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant and the recommended motion is to preliminarily approve the subdivision. And schedule final review on June fourteenth, twenty twenty two. The next item is the Forbes Avenue consolidation. This is a consolidation of eight parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on Forbes Avenue, Boundary Street and South Craig Street would be eighty five thousand three hundred eighty four square feet in area. A parking lot and a two story building are located on the subject property. And the recommended motion is to preliminarily approve the Forbes Avenue consolidation. And schedule final review on June fourteenth, twenty twenty two.
Okay, so commissioners for item one and two. We're looking for preliminary approval and Mr. Shepkey, did you say June fourteenth for both?
Yeah, for both the applications, final review on June fourteenth.
Okay, great. So we're looking for preliminary approval for final application coming June fourteenth. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner.
Yeah. On the Forbes Avenue, what's the proposed use for this?
I don't think that a any change used is proposed. There's several parcels owned by CMU and as far as I'm aware, the application is simply to consolidate into a single lot.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to hold these preliminarily until June fourteenth? Thank you very much. Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Askey. Burton Falk, aye. Dietrich? Commissioner Dietrich? Commissioner Dick? Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
And Commissioner O'Neil?
Aye.
I'm unmuted, aye.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Commissioner Dietrich. All right, so we're going to move to item number eight, taken separately, that is DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty two zero zero seven six one, that would be Nixon Street Minor Consolidation. Manchester. Mr. Shepkey?
Thank you. This is the Nixon Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of two parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have two hundred seventy five feet of frontage on Nixon Street would be twenty eight thousand twenty five square feet in area. A one story building is located on the subject property and the recommended motion is to approve the Nixon Street consolidation.
Thank you, Mr. Shepkey. Is there, is there any public testimony regarding? Number eight? Hearing, it looks like non-commission. Any questions, comments or motion from the floor? Motion to approve? Okay, great. All right, I'll take a motion from Dietrich, second from Commissioner. Apologies there. Commissioner Askey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk, I'm going to abstain. Commissioner Dietrich, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo? And Commissioner O'Neil? And Commissioner Mingo, I'll go back to you.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, so motion carries, it passes. So we're going to go through items. Three, four, five, six, seven, nine and ten. Plan of lots, item three, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty two dash zero zero five nine one Sawmill Run Boulevard, major consolidation, Mount Washington. Item four, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty two dash zero zero seven one seven Penn Avenue Minor Consolidation Central Business District. Item number five, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty two dash zero zero Item number five, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven one six at fifty-five twenty-five Penn Avenue, Lot Line Revision, Garfields. Item six, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven four five, Auburn Street, minor subdivision, Larmour. Agenda item seven, DCP dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven three two at Goatman Street, Lot Line Revision, Troy Hill. Item number nine, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven seven seven, Merriman Court, Lot Line Revision, South Side Flats. Item number ten, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven seven nine, Forland Street, minor consolidation, East Allegheny. Mr. Shepke?
Thank you. Item number three is the Sawmill Run Boulevard consolidation. This is the consolidation of two parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on Sawmill Run Boulevard and be fifty-five thousand four hundred and eighteen square feet in area. A salt dome in a one-story building, which will both be demolished, are located on the subject property. This is a major subdivision, which was first reviewed by the planning commission on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and the recommended motion is to approve the Sawmill Run Boulevard consolidation. The next item is the Penn Avenue consolidation. This is a consolidation of two parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would be, would have one hundred and six feet of frontage on Penn Avenue and be eleven thousand four hundred and forty-six square feet in area. A six-story building is located on the subject property, and the recommended motion is to approve the Penn Avenue consolidation. The next item is the five-five-two-five Penn Avenue Lot Line Revision. This is a Lot Line Revision involving two parcels. The proposed lot one would have one hundred and thirty-two feet of frontage on Penn Avenue and would be twenty-five thousand nine hundred and fifteen square feet in area. The proposed lot two would have ninety feet of frontage on Penn Avenue and would be seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven square feet in area. Two one-story structures are located on the subject property. No new parcels would be created because of this plan. Staff's recommended motion is to approve the five-five-two-five Penn Avenue Lot Line Revision. The next item is the Auburn Street subdivision. This is the subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. The proposed lot one would have twenty-three feet of frontage on Auburn Street, would be two thousand three hundred and thirty-nine square feet in area. The proposed lot two would have twenty-three feet of frontage on Auburn Street, would be two thousand three hundred and thirty-nine square feet in area. A house is located on the subject property, and the recommended motion is to approve the Auburn Street subdivision. The next item is the Getman Street Lot Line Revision. This is a Lot Line Revision involving two parcels. The revised lot two R would have twenty-three feet of frontage on Getman Street and be six thousand ninety-one square feet in area. The revised lot three R would have frontage on Provin Street and would be three thousand eight hundred and eighty-three square feet in area. No new parcels are created in this plan, and the recommended motion is to approve the Getman Street Lot Line Revision. And item nine is the Merriman Court Lot Line Revision. This is a Lot Line Revision involving two parcels. The revised lot one would have frontage on Merriman Court and would be three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five square feet in area. The revised lot two would comprise of the Merriman Court right-of-way and would be twelve thousand sixty-nine square feet in area. No new parcels are created in this plan, and the subject property is a private street, which the applicant intends to dedicate to the city. And the recommended motion is to approve the Merriman Court Lot Line Revision. And the last item is the Forland Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of three parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on Forland Street and would be three thousand six hundred and twenty-five square feet in area. A house is located on the subject property, and the recommended motion is to approve the Forland Street consolidation. And that's it for Plan of Lots, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepke. At this time, do we have any public testimony regarding the Plan of Lots? Okay. Hearing none, commissioners, might I have a motion to approve three through seven, nine, and ten?
So moved.
Commissioner Dietrich, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, both. All right, we're going to go through, Commissioner Askey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
And you, Commissioner Mondor, or Commissioner O'Neill? Oh, wait, 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 never mind. Okay, we're good. No more. Motion passes, it carries, so they're approved. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next agenda item and final agenda item for today is the Director's Report. Do we have anything to share today?
We have no Director's Report today, no.
Okay, very good. So with no Director's Report, I would just like to thank the commissioners for being here today and staff as well, everyone for doing a great job and putting up with my little bit of rusty today. Commissioner Dietrich?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you so very much, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, we'll do it at the same time.
Aye.
Have a great day, enjoy some of that sunshine. Hopefully, it's not as scorching hot. Enjoy.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Sorry for the recording problems, it's all, it's all fine.
Oh, no worries. Hey, if you could put up with my rusty, I-